So before I call the meeting to order, just a couple of housekeeping matters. Number one, from the agenda. Actually, let me just welcome everyone. I appreciate you all getting on. This is a meeting that the majority of the council called, not me. So number one. If you looked at the agenda that I believe has been posted. Most of the matters are really things that don't need to necessarily be done this year. But the approach here is clearly that the Democratic majority of our council wants to commit or try to commit the future council and governing body. Number two, there, as I understand it, a litigation pending that can also affect the things that are being considered tonight. Number three, at our last regular meeting, which was last week, the council adjourned signed die. Which means that this council is essentially dissolved for the year until a new council takes its seat next year. So I will leave it to others to judge the validity of this meeting, given that the last meeting was adjourned signed up. Number four, if you recall last week's meeting, in particular, Councilwoman O turned it into a Zoom zoo. We're not doing that tonight, Ms. Duffy. You haven't given me controls of the mute button. You have them in violation of my rights, but I expect you to exercise those and to exercise that mute button if anyone gets out of hand again, as Councilwoman O did last week. In fact, you should actually give me those controls as I chaired the meeting. I won't belabor the point. We'll deal with that next year. So that said, I will proceed under protest and I reserve my rights to governing bodies' rights and the residents' rights as to the validity of this meeting. With that, I gavel in. And I call the meeting to order, subject to everything that I said. Madam Clerk, have a roll call, please.
Can't hear you, Lizette.
Mayor Kranjak?
I'm here.
Councilperson Pharaoh?
Here.
Sabari?
Here.
Oh? Gregorio?
Here.
Aversa?
Here.
Woo?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Here.
And municipal clerk. Mayor, everyone's present except Council President.
Can't hear you.
We can't hear you, Lizette.
Everyone is present except Council President O.
Okay. Missing from our agenda this evening, and this is, I guess, from the Agenda Committee, Sabario and Aversa, is the flag salute. So let all, let us all salute the flag.
I knew we wanted to know that for something around that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you for reading that into the record. Again, I welcome everyone this evening. Even though this may not be a valid meeting, I do want to give everyone a COVID-19 report. As of today, there are 16 active cases of COVID-19 in Englewood Cliffs. The last positive case was today. There have been in total 163 cases of COVID-19 this year. And sadly and unfortunately, deaths with the last death taking place in May, mid-May. So our condolences still go out to those families who have been affected with a death, and I wish everyone continued good health, who have been able to avoid COVID-19, and I hope we are now coming to an end. There is a vaccine being distributed, as you all know, and I should also mention separately. I don't like the nanny state concept of politicians where they all tell you what you already know, but there's a large snowstorm expected tomorrow night. I'm only mentioning it in the event that anyone needs help. Call Borough Hall during the day or the Police Department if it's an emergency, and they will assist you. Thank you. At this point in our agenda, I see that we are to go into closed session. So I need a motion to go into closed session, please.
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 A little more energy there, folks. Anyone opposed? Okay. Madam Clerk, we're going to go into closed session, but you need to get us there with what you need to read into the record, please.
Okay, can you hear me or no?
We can't hear you.
You can or you can't?
Now we can, yes.
One, Resolution 199, whereas the mayor and council of the borough of Englewood Cliffs has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain confidential matters. And whereas the minutes of the closed session will remain confidential as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act and shall be released when there is no further need for confidentiality as authorized by the Borough Attorney. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the borough of Englewood Cliffs will go into closed session for the following matters as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:4-12. Borough of Englewood Cliffs, B E R L 6119-15 Affordable Housing. And 800 Sylvan versus Borough of Englewood Cliffs, B E R L 69-18A-4019-172. Thank you.
Okay. For the public, I don't know how long it'll take, but y'all have plenty of time to go have dinner, I believe. And again, I don't see us getting back before eight o'clock. But we'll, we'll see how we do. There's a lot of things that I haven't been informed about, and I believe some of our councilmen also haven't been informed of either. So we have a lot of questions and a lot of documents just arrived over the last couple of hours. As is typical when you're trying to, as they say, pull a fast one. So.
This is about the resolutions that were posted. That's what we're discussing in closed session.
You can have the floor, Ms. Sabari, when I'm finished. No, no, it's all true. You can look at my email. I just received a.
Look at the agenda. There are resolutions. Those resolutions.
When I have the floor, I expect the floor, and when you have the floor, I'll let you have the floor. Okay? Thank you. That's the way it works. Don't turn this into a Zoom zoo like your colleague did last week.
Like you do most weeks.
Very nicely is not here tonight, so we're all blessed with that absence. So we will go into closed session to the public, and when we come back, there'll be an opportunity for the public to comment, and I encourage your comments on the things that I mentioned earlier this evening when I started the session. Thank you.
Good. Keep encouraging.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion, please, to come out of closed session?
No move.
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you to the public for waiting for us to come back. We were in closed session for about an hour and 20 minutes. And I see there's a lot more people on Zoom if they're meeting right now. So I just want to repeat one point that I made earlier regarding, actually two points. One was regarding COVID-19. We have 16 active cases in town. The last active case was diagnosed today, so we've had a total of 163. And sadly, we've had five deaths, the last one being in May. The other point I want to mention is that, as everyone knows, you don't need me to give you the weather report. There's going to be a snowstorm tomorrow. If anyone needs anything, or if you know somebody that needs assistance, call Borough Hall or the Police Department. They're, they're always ready, willing, and able to assist. And if they can't assist, they'll find you somebody who can. Okay? So that's all I wanted to say right now. Next on our agenda is approval of the caucus and regular meeting minutes from December 9th, 2020. That was last week's meeting.
Need a motion?
No move.
You need a second?
Okay, maybe we'll try again next month on that one.
Is there, Mr. De Gregorio, you can second the minutes you participated?
Did you participate in the caucus?
I did not in the caucus, no.
By the regular.
I was sworn in in the regular, right? Am I correct? So, I mean, I can second surely, but.
You can only second the regular meeting. You can't second the caucus meeting.
Well, then I'll second the regular meeting.
Okay, so let's just go back and have a separate motion. Let's deal with the caucus minutes first. Is there a motion to move them in? Lizette, I'm getting feedback from somewhere.
I don't know if Mr. Aversa is on.
The feedback is not coming from that. It's that I can, you can see the little green box open up.
I'm still on. I'm still on. Just couldn't hear me.
No, no, there was feedback coming from.
Can you hear me or am I still out?
No, you're still on.
Okay.
I don't know whose box the feedback is coming from.
I see Galaxy X10.
I see. I muted it.
And hung.
So why don't we just move forward with the meeting?
We're, we have a motion from Councilwoman Sabari. We need a second for the caucus and regular minutes.
Okay, we don't have a second. Why don't we do this while we go to the public portion? We could always come back.
Sure.
Can I have a motion to open to the public?
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So for the public, we're going to open the meeting to the public to comment. We encourage you to comment. If you wish to speak, you could do it a couple of different ways. You could raise your hand virtually. You could wave at me. And if you're on the phone, you could unmute yourself and just say you wish to be heard, and we'll try to slot you in between whoever else is speaking. Anybody from the public? I don't see anyone.
I don't see any hands, Mayor.
I see no hands.
I see Mary.
Oh, Mrs. O'Shea, go ahead. Just unmute yourself.
Um, I don't have too much to say. I was reading through the agenda items, and I have to say that I am disappointed but not surprised that the Democrat majority is, as a lame duck session, is trying to push their agenda through before the end of the year, and it's really insult to the residents that did not want the Democrats in control of the council that they are proceeding to do an action like they are doing tonight. And it just, it's very poor judgment and I don't want to poor character, very poor character. Okay, that's my comment. And none of these things have had a time deadline that, that had to be done today rather than last week, that you needed to make a special meeting to do it before the new council people take over. Just wrong, just wrong. It's against the wishes of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. And I mentioned earlier in the meeting that this council really, again, has no reason to be doing this this month. They could have waited till next month, but they're trying to tie the hands of the new governing body. And also, I had mentioned that the entire meeting may be invalid because the regular meeting last week was adjourned signed die, which basically dissolves this council until the new council is seated next year in January. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
What we are trying to do, Mary, is to incorporate the final steps of our settlement agreement. We've never said, and I'm not going to say now either, that we are not in agreement with that. We voted as the majority to settle our obligations. And part of settling those obligations is signing on board and creating these resolutions. So if you have questions regarding the resolutions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. But that's all we're trying to do here is to make sure that what has been put in place actually happens so that the borough doesn't get in trouble in 2021 and get hit with 600 units at 800 Sylvan. That's all we're trying to do. We're not trying to pull a fast one. You know as well as I do that every Democrat, Republican, whoever you're talking about, at the end of the year, there are always special meetings to try to finalize whatever needs to be finalized. That's all we're doing here. There's nothing else going on, and I'm sorry if you feel that there is.
No, you're not. Anybody else? I see. I think I see a hand up. Dan Steinhegen? 800 Sylvan's attorney. Would you like to speak with us? I see, I thought I saw Steinhegen.
No, I did, I did not.
You didn't see that?
Of course you didn't. He's just being his usual snarky self.
Anybody else listening to be heard?
I don't see any additional hands, Mayor.
Okay, if you're on a phone and you want to speak, unmute yourself because we can't tell if you want to speak or not. Okay. I don't see anyone else. So can I have a motion to close the public portion?
Motion closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Our resolutions. So these all relate to what Councilwoman Sabari mentioned in terms of the settlement that she and the Democrat majority voted on for the affordable housing litigation. One is Resolution 20-200. And I object to all these because I don't believe that we need to do these right now. And I know Steinhegen's listening, so just to be clear, if there's a deal that we did in the settlement, that we will comply with it. So make sure you stop lying to the judge when you say that the mayor is trying not to comply with it. Okay? I take my obligations very seriously. The Democratic majority entered into a settlement, and that's the deal that the town has to honor. Okay? Get that straight, Dan.
Motion to appoint Triad as.
So this is Resolution 20-200. This is a resolution of the council of the borough of Englewood Cliffs appointing a company named Triad as the borough of Englewood Cliffs administrative agent. Now, there's a blank here for a title company. I don't know if there's a name to put in there.
I need a second?
Well, I'm sorry. There's, there's two blanks in here, okay? So it's, it's to appoint.
I add as the borough of Englewood Cliffs administrative agent.
All right, I'm looking at the resolution. It says to appoint in brackets name of brackets title slash company. Is Triad.
We're appointing Triad as.
Just Triad?
Native agent.
Okay, so no individual. So, so Ms. Duffy, you'll have to modify this resolution to.
Sure, of course.
Clean that up.
Okay.
Now, I understand that there's also an agreement that I haven't had a chance to look at, but I would expect that there'd be some kind of indemnification of the borough in there. Is there a motion?
We vote. There's a motion and a second.
Who seconded?
Who seconded?
I did.
I seconded. Oh, David did.
Well, that's all right. Go ahead.
Please have a roll call.
I'm sorry, but who seconded, please?
David did.
Ed did.
Councilperson Pharaoh?
I abstain.
Of course we do.
Sabari?
Yes.
Ms. Sabari, just keep your comments to yourself. People are free to vote how they wish to vote, okay?
And Mario, keep your comments to yourself. Thank you very much.
De Gregorio?
Okay, but you can't comment on other people's topics.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Thank.
Next on the agenda is Resolution 20-201. This is a resolution of the council of the borough of Englewood Cliffs appointing, and I have a blank, as municipal housing liaison.
Well, after discussing this with the professionals, it's normally an employee of the borough. We haven't had a chance to speak with anybody in the borough, but I'd like to recommend Kathy Skankarella. Then she already handles the co-funds for the town.
I second that.
Okay, I just reserved that you haven't spoken with her and you're being presumptuous that somebody wants more duties and responsibility.
No, but we do have, we do have the right to change forward. So if Kathy is not interested in taking on that position, we can look for somebody else.
I generally don't appoint people unless we've spoken with them first, but.
Okay, well, we need to appoint somebody, so that's who I recommend, and it's been seconded, so can we vote?
Councilperson Pharaoh?
Stain.
Sabari?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. De Gregorio?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Thank.
Next is Resolution 20-202. Resolution of Borough of Englewood Cliffs, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, adopting an affirmative marketing plan for the borough of Englewood Cliffs.
No move.
Second.
Councilperson Pharaoh?
Stain.
Sabari?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Thank.
Next is Resolution 20-203. It's called a resolution of need. Ms. Duffy, has the public seen these resolutions?
Yes, Mayor, they have.
They're posted? Okay, I just want to make sure. We literally just got these as well.
We need a motion?
No move.
Second.
Councilperson Pharaoh?
Stain.
Sabari?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Thank.
Next is Resolution 20-204. This is a resolution authorizing a financial agreement for payments in lieu of taxes for 100% affordable housing project Hudson Terrace Municipal Site. So one of the things about affordable housing is that it's kind of like a square peg in a round hole when it comes to the taxpayers because not only does the town have to give up property, and not only does everyone's property taxes go up as a result of what's happening, but in terms of full disclosure, what we've learned this evening and over the past couple of weeks as well, or since last week, is that you don't actually get to collect property taxes on these units from the developer. Instead, what they do is there's a range of pilot payments. And those payments are like a license fee, basically, an annual fee. And they, in our case, they would range between 1% and 6.28% in lieu of any taxes. So at 6.28% on the Hudson Terrace project, you would, the town would receive about roughly $40,000 a year. At 1%, it receives, I believe, around $7,000. So the reason for this, as it was explained to me, and I don't, I don't buy into this, is that you basically help the developer get an additional $500,000 of private loan money for purposes of satisfying the project and just other incentives. So.
Actually, that, that is, that's not how it works. If the, if the borough chooses, and we have a choice to either go with a 6.28% pilot program or a 1% pilot program, and what that does is depending upon what we choose, decides how much money we have to come up with as a borough. If we give them a pilot program at 6.28, they have to pay the borough $40,000 a year in real estate taxes. If we say we're going to knock that down to one, they'll be able to get more financing because the NOI of the development will have more money in it to pay interest on a loan. That's, that's putting it very simply. I personally, I personally, please let me finish. I personally believe that a pilot program is a 30-year program. The borough could come up with the $588,000 and not have to give them a 1%, but get the $40,000 a year for infinity on that property. Or we can turn around and say, we're going to give you 1% and go out and get the financing so the borough doesn't have to come up with the money. So we all know that we have X amount of dollars in co-funds, which, once we receive the final payment from LG, which will bring us a little over 2 million. So this, in fact, either we come up with the 588, or we allow the developer to go out and get the financing. I personally think we probably have the ability to come up with the 588, once we take the legal fees out of the budget and we take out of the budget the we have the new revenue coming in from LG. Part of it, a million dollars that they owe us going back, which is going to be sitting in surplus. So my personal opinion is, yes, we should do a pilot program, but we should do it at the higher amount. So I would recommend that we vote to do a pilot program at 6.28% and we would come up with the money when needed, which would be sometime in 2021 at the end of the year. So I'm going to.
That's basically. Are you finished? Let me just finish.
Yes.
Okay, so that's kind of the corner that you painted the town into, and that's, those are the two choices that we have.
That's what you would like to believe, but that same choice was going to be pushed upon the residents if it was your project or this project. So stop it, Mario.
My project did not have.
Once again, you're lying to the public. This is.
My project at the end of 2018, and let me finish. I was.
It's pretty simple math. Come up with the money or give them a pilot.
All right, whenever you're finished, I will speak. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mario.
Just to catch everyone up, at the end of 2018, we had 100% affordable housing project at Hudson Terrace.
Which was going to work the same way.
Okay, you have to just stop interrupting me, please.
But that's the truth.
Don't turn it into a Zoom zoo, and you're lying when you say that because there was not going to be any settlement with 800 Sylvan. There was not going to be any residential property development.
No, you were going to lose. You lost.
No, no, you can't keep interrupting, okay?
Okay.
Don't turn it into the glory of Zoom zoo, okay? We're not doing that this week. Are you finished? I would like to finish. All right, it sounds like you're finished. Let me finish. At the end of 2018, we are going to do a 100% affordable housing plan and project on Hudson Terrace. There was not going to be anything built at 800 Sylvan. Debbie came into power with her cronies, and now we're doing both, right? They're building at 800 Sylvan, and we have to do this project. So Ms. Sabari, it's different. It's. It's quite different. It's very different.
Mario, your plan was deficient. It wasn't going to work.
No, you.
Stop lying to the public.
Now, are you finished?
Yes, can we just vote?
Because that was, that was my plan, and then you came in because you all thought you knew better.
Your plan didn't work, your professional.
All your friends, and now they're building there at 800 Sullivan.
That's what you would like the public to.
Nice going. Nice.
Motion to move Resolution 20-205.
20.
205 or 204?
204.
204. Can I get a second?
I'm sorry. What was the amount then? Final, is it 6.28%?
Yes. That, that's what I'm recommending.
Councilperson's Pharaoh?
Abstain.
Sabari?
Yes.
Oh, De Gregorio?
Yes.
Oversa?
Yes.
And Woo?
Aye.
Okay, next is Resolution 20-205. This is a resolution appointing an affordable housing developer and authorizing negotiations of developers agreement and financial agreement. Now, I understand that there's a name to fill in here. And so whoever makes the motion, fill in the name.
I'd like to make the motion, and I'd like to fill in the name of Michaels.
Okay, and then in terms of full disclosure to the public, Mr. Trauner finally admitted that his firm had represented Michaels, not on this matter, but on other matters. So of course they're showing up here as well.
Okay, motion, resolution, to move Resolution 20-205 incorporating the name of Michaels as the developer for the town of Inglewood Cliffs. Can I get a second?
Second.
Councilperson's Pharaoh?
Abstain.
Sabari?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Oversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Abstain.
Okay, I think that's it for resolutions. I, I wish everyone continued good holiday of Hanukkah and Merry Christmas.
Mayor, can we try the minutes again? I don't know if Councilman Oversa is still there.
Yes, he is. Can we approve the minutes?
If not, let's adjourn.
I second those.
Okay, hold on, please. The motion was by Councilwoman Sabari and a second by.
She said, she said, let's approve them. She never made a motion.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, and they were seconded by Councilman Oversa?
Motion to approve what minutes?
Second it.
Now, hold on a second, let's do this right. If you're going to approve them, the motion is to approve the minutes, and you have to mention what they are.
Hey, Mario.
Can, if you're going to make a motion, Debbie, which ones are you moving? Let's try and get this.
Separating, right? We're going to separate caucus.
No, you could do them together and Councilman De Gregorio abstains, yeah.
Okay, motion to move the minutes of the caucus in the regular meeting of December 9th, 2020.
Right, he can, he doesn't have to vote on the caucus. Okay, may I have a second? There were. No, they were seconded by Councilman.
I seconded them, I seconded them.
Councilperson's Pharaoh?
No.
Sabari?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Just on the meeting that I was at, which was the regular meeting.
Okay, and abstain on the other.
And abstain on the other, correct.
On caucus. Thank you. Oversa?
Yes.
Woo?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, everyone, have a good night.